All of the plans that were developed, including the proposed final draft plan, followed laws, guidelines that extend from the U.S. Constitution in various court cases, federal legislation, the Washington State Constitution and codes, the Washington State's Voting Rights Act, and the City of Everett, Washington Districting Master and Commission Directions and criteria. To summarize these guidelines, they include: The district shall be as reasonably equal in population as possible; The district shall be reasonably compact; District shall consist of geographically contiguous area; District boundaries shall coincide with existing recognized natural boundaries and shall, to the extent possible, preserve existing communities of related and mutual interest to the extent feasible; Population data may not be used for the purpose of favoring or disfavoring any racial group or political party; and districts shall be drawn to follow existing voting precinct boundaries. Continuously throughout plan development, we also preserve communities of interest. We followed the results of a citywide study that found that 75% of the respondents selected existing neighborhoods as the primary community of interest to preserve. Therefore, neighborhoods were prioritized for preserving or not splitting. However, some neighborhoods were split by precincts, and precincts were used as the lowest building blocks. So, in those instances, we had no choice but to split a neighborhood. A second-ranked community of interest in the study was "other." However, the third, fourth, and fifth-ranked communities of interest were language, income groups, and housing types, respectively. Thus, language, income groups, and housing types, and other common socioeconomic attributes were viewed and attempted to be preserved within districts. The commission's plans generated followed a logical and methodical process to develop, beginning with establishing the district cores. The district cores act like seeds for each district. There are five district cores representing five districts. They include: 1 Delta, 2 Lowell, 3 Boulevard Bluffs, Harbor View, Seahurst, Glen Haven, and View Ridge, Madison, 4 Casino Road within Westmont, and 5 Silver Lake. After the selection of the district cores, several preliminary plans were generated by myself and presented to the commission. The commission provided comments on the advantages and disadvantages of each plan, and included the plans of A1, A2, A3, and B1. From those comments, I developed a new set of alternative plans, and they included plans A4, A5, A6, and B2. Another set of comments were provided by the commissioners on the second set of alternative plans. These comments were incorporated into a final alternative draft plan, A7. Additional comments on Plan A7 were obtained from the commissioners and integrated to produce Plan A8, the proposed final draft plan. The proposed final draft plan, A8, followed all of the redistricting criteria that I discussed before. It is equal in population within an acceptable deviation. It is reasonably compact. The districts are contiguous excluding the Lake Chaplin area. The districts coincide with natural boundaries when reasonable to do so. It preserves communities of interest, specifically neighborhoods. It did not favor or disfavor any racial group or political party, and it minimized political subdivision splits, specifically precincts. Next is a description of each district. First District 1. District 1's core area is Delta. It is a northern-based district that is shown in green. The neighborhoods include Delta, Bayside in part, Northwest Everett, Port Gardner in part, and Riverside in part. The largest populated neighborhood is Delta. Two neighborhoods, Delta and Northwest Everett, are wholly contained. A small portion of Riverside is not contained within the district, and the Port Gardner section includes one precinct, Precinct 17, that splits Riverside and Port Gardner. Bayside is split without Precinct 18 contained within the district. The district includes a diverse population of Delta that has a third of the person speaking another language and over 42% minority in the neighborhood, and that's 2020 estimates. The district is also characterized by containing the city's colleges and older housing structures, and that's excluding the Delta neighborhood which has a greater percentage of rental units. District 1 has the lowest estimated population growth from 2010 to 2020 out of all of the districts, and that's a 6.85%. District 1's configuration started with determining whether Delta and Northwest Everett should exist in the same district. Delta and Northwest Everett was combined after analysis showed a relatively small turnout difference between combining Delta with a Northwest Everett district configuration and a Delta district that adjoins areas to the south of Delta. The next decision was to split mostly Bayside or Riverside. Bayside was split along Precinct 18, which allowed for most of downtown to be included in District 2. Also, Precinct 18 was a good demarcation point since it appears to match socioeconomically with the Northwest precincts in Port Gardner. Precinct 17 was added to contain most of Riverside. Only a small portion of Riverside was left in District 2, which is zero population, and Precinct 17 also splits Port Gardner with seven persons left contained within District 1. The area contained within the red circle includes the area Riverside that is not within District 1. It contains zero population, and of course, that is using 2010 population data. The green circle includes the area in Port Gardner within Precinct 17 that contains seven persons, and that does exist in District 1. District 2's core area is Lowell. The district encompasses the central eastern portion of the city to the northwestern side of the city, and is shown in pink. The neighborhoods contained include Bayside in part, Glacier View, Lowell, Pinehurst, Beverly Park in part, Port Gardner in part, South Forest Park in part, and Valley View. The largest populated neighborhood is Port Gardner. Three neighborhoods, Glacier View, Lowell, and Valley View are wholly contained. The district neighborhoods also include very similar median housing age that centers around the mid-1960s era. The district has the second-highest estimated population growth of the districts from 2010 to 2020, and that's at 12.74%, and has the largest amount of businesses at 1,607, and that's using Esri's 2020 enrichment data estimation system. District 2's configuration began with establishing Lowell as the core area and connecting the area to the downtown region directly below District 1. As mentioned before, Bayside was split along Precinct 18, which allowed for most of downtown to be included in District 2, and it appears that Precinct 18 matches socioeconomically with the Northwest precincts in Port Gardner. Precinct 17 was not included in District 2 in order to contain most of Riverside in District 1. Only a small portion of Riverside was left in District 2. Since Precinct 17 also splits Port Gardner, once again, seven persons in Port Gardner were left within District 1. Next, there was a determination of whether to include South Forest Park within District 2 or District 3. Reviewing socioeconomic neighborhood commonalities, South Forest Park could fit well with either District 2 or District 3. However, in order for District 3 to exist within the acceptable population deviation, Evergreen and South Forest Park could not both be wholly contained within District 3. Thus, most of South Forest Park was placed in District 2. Only a small segment of South Forest Park is excluded from the district due to Precinct 33 splitting the neighborhoods of View Ridge, Madison, and South Forest Park. The map shown here with the red circle includes Precinct 18 that has been split from Bayside and included in the northern neck of District 2. Next, District 3, whose core area includes Boulevard Bluffs, Harbor View, Seahurst, Glen Haven, and View Ridge, Madison. The district encompasses a portion of the western and coastal areas of the city and is displayed in purple. The district contains the neighborhoods of Boulevard Bluffs, Evergreen, Harbor View, Seahurst, Glen Haven, South Forest Park in part, and View Ridge, Madison. The largest populated neighborhood is View Ridge, Madison. Four of the neighborhoods, Boulevard Bluffs, Evergreen, Harbor View, Seahurst, Glen Haven, and View Ridge, Madison, are wholly contained. South Forest Park is split to include a small portion, only 341 persons, within the district, and that's within Precinct 33. District 3 is characterized by its coastal western boundaries as well as moderately newer housing structures with a median year of 1978 and the highest median household income at $83,492 of all the districts. The district also has the second-lowest population growth from 2010 to 2020 at 7.34%. District 3's configuration began with wholly containing the district's core of Boulevard Bluffs, Harbor View, Seahurst, Glen Haven, and View Ridge, Madison neighborhoods. Once it was determined that most of South Forest Park should exist inside District 2, Evergreen could remain wholly contained within District 3. A small portion of South Forest Park would exist in District 3 due to Precinct 33 splitting the neighborhoods of South Forest Park and View Ridge, Madison. Also, the industrial areas around Boeing could remain mostly intact above the Boeing freeway and included in District 3. The map displays the area within District 3 that includes South Forest Park. This is a small portion of Precinct 33 that is split by View Ridge, Madison, and South Forest Park and contains 341 persons. District 4's core area includes Casino Road that's within Westmont. The district encompasses the southwestern portion of the city, and that's shown in blue. The district contains the neighborhoods of Cascade View in part, Holly, Twin Creeks in part, and Westmont in part. The largest populated neighborhood is Westmont. One neighborhood, Holly, is wholly contained. Westmont is almost wholly contained. It does not contain one census block, which has only five persons. The entire district exists below the Boeing freeway. The district is characterized by its diverse population with the highest percentage of the districts that speak another language in addition to English at 41.45%. The district also has newer housing structures in median of 1988 and higher rent percentage at 69.15%. Using 2020 total population estimates, the district is the only majority-minority district in the city. District 4's configuration began with the core area of Casino Road. Since it was not conventional redistricting practice to follow only a road, the neighborhood of Westmont was a starting point for District 4. Only a single census block of Westmont remained not included in District 4, and it includes only five persons in 2010. This census block exists in Precinct 42, which splits Westmont and Cascade View. Since the neighborhood of Holly had similar socioeconomic and demographic attributes and is geographically intertwined with Westmont, it was logically added to District 4. Precinct 47 and 95 were added to wholly contain Holly within District 4. The precincts also were close to matching District 4 socioeconomic characteristics. However, the two precincts also split Cascade View and Twin Creeks. Precinct 84 finally was added to ring District 4 within acceptable population deviation, and it improves the compactness of the district. The red circle on the map highlights the census block that is split by Cascade View and Westmont, and thus is not included in District 4. As mentioned before, this only contained five persons in 2010. District 5's core area is Silver Lake. The district encompasses the southeastern portion of the city, and that's shown in green. The neighborhoods within the district include Cascade View in part, Pinehurst, Beverly Park in part, Silver Lake, Twin Creeks in part, and Westmont in part. The largest populated neighborhood is Silver Lake. One of the neighborhoods, Silver Lake, is wholly contained. The district is characterized by a mixture of diverse population. It is the second-highest of the districts. Newer housing structures, median is 1986. Moderately higher median household incomes, $68,155, and relatively high percentage that speaks another language in addition to English at 31.44%. District 5's configuration began with the core area of Silver Lake. District 5 added to Silver Lake the nearby neighborhood areas of Twin Creeks and Cascade View to the district. This was compelled due to being landlocked and not encroaching into District 4. After adding areas of Twin Creeks and Cascade View, population was needed for the district to reach an acceptable deviation. It was decided to not cross over Evergreen Way to add population from Evergreen, and it would also split the neighborhood. Instead, areas of Pinehurst, Beverly Park were added in order to bring District 5 population deviation within the acceptable standard. Precincts 34, 37, and 39 were included into District 5. These precincts have socioeconomic attributes that are reasonably close to District 5, and thus were added to complete the district. The map depicts the northern end of District 5, which focuses on the three precincts in Pinehurst, Beverly Park that were added to the district. Precinct 34, 37, and 39 were selected instead of crossing Evergreen Way and splitting the neighborhood of Evergreen. And that is a complete and concise description of the background, plan development, and the proposed final draft plan, A8. Thank you for your time.
Awesome. So that's the overview video. Next, I'm going to have all the commissioners introduce themselves. So we'll go alphabetical order. So we'll start with Mary Fossey.
Hi. Okay, my name is Mary Fossey. I'm an Everett Essentials graduate, small business owner, and I've lived in the Delta neighborhood for over 14 years now. And I am also the chair of the Delta Neighborhood Association, and I serve on the Council of Neighborhoods and the Everett Public Schools Fiscal Advisory Council. I really love this city. I think it's an amazing place to live and raise my children, and I met my husband here. And as I said last couple of times, the reason why I volunteered for this commission was because I wanted to be a part of creating a more equitable system of voting and better representation on the city council while avoiding disenfranchising anyone. Public feedback again, and to see if the community, that the commission, thinks of that.
Awesome. Thank you, Mary. Chris Gory?
Hi, I'm Chris Gory. I've been an Everett city resident for about five years. I live down in the Silver Lake area where I'm involved with our Block Watch, our Neighborhood Association, Council of Neighborhoods, and I was interested in this opportunity to learn more about the city and the districting process, and I've enjoyed getting to know everyone on here and hopefully serving your needs as the citizenry. So I look forward to your comments today and appreciate your attendance.
Thank you, Chris. And also, Chris is our vice chair, and he's been super helpful through this whole process. Next, Jim Langus.
My name is Jim Langus. I was born and resided in the city for most of my life. I've always had a genuine interest in the city and its future. I consider that the districting, volunteering is a community service, and I'm happy to serve in this capacity. Our committee has been very attentive. They have been serious with their responsibility, and they've worked very hard. We've spent a lot of time and been committed to this process. I am a graduate of Everett High School. I've been an advocate for the Everett School District for years, and I support my alma mater, Everett High School, when I'm able to, and glad to be able to serve.
Thank you, Jim. Ethel McNeil?
Yes, my name is Ethel McNeil, and I have lived in Everett since 1969. I've served in many areas with the Everett School District, as stuff the bus for back-to-school for the kids, and as recent, the boundary changes for the 2019-2020 school year. I was on the Council of Neighborhoods, and I was on the Envision Everett 2037 team as well. And I was appointed to the Everett City Council when Mayor Franklin became the mayor of the city of Everett. I also have served in the capacity of working with some of the other areas in the city of Everett. I'm a part of the SMART team for the city of Everett. And when I was living, as I've lived here, I also played soccer, coached soccer for youth kids in the area, and I've been very active here in the area. I love the city of Everett, and having districts in this city for me is important that we put them in the right place and they serve the city of Everett correctly, that everyone, everyone is treated fairly, and everyone is recognized as a human being and a citizen of this city and being valuable to this city. So I look forward to seeing what happens. This team has worked very hard and looking at everything to try to put this districting map together. So I too am interested in to see what the community has to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ethel. So next, John Monroe.
Yeah, I'm John Monroe, and I'm a resident of Port Gardner neighborhood. I've lived in Everett for the last 63 years, product of the Everett Public Schools, Jackson Elementary, South Junior, and like Jim, but a few years after Jim, Everett High School Segal. I am retired from the Boeing Company. I was an executive there on the 777 program. I enjoyed a great career. And like I said, I've always lived in the city of Everett. Since I've retired, I've become much more active in the community, active with the Everett Public Schools. I chair their STEM CTE advisory committee. I think it's really important to make sure that when our kids get out of high school, they're ready for that first job, and that's one of the things that CTE and STEM does. So, like the rest of the team, it's been very interesting. It's a learning exercise for all of us, but I think the end result has been something that is, well represents the city and something that we need. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Kari Quas?
Hi, my name is Kari Quas. I live in the northwest neighborhood. I'm currently the chair. I grew up here. I'm living in the same house I lived in as a kid. I was trying to tally my years in Everett. It's around 30 cumulatively, like been back about seven years. I'm a photographer, so these smoky skies are very interesting, and I work in the conservation field. This has been a great process, growing up here and living here again and watching how Everett's changed over the years. So I like this team of commissioners we have, and I look forward to your comments today.
Thank you, Kari. Julius Wilson?
Okay. Hi, I'm Julius Wilson. I live in Westmont-Holly. I've been living here for three years, and I look forward to hearing too many comments on the map that we worked on.
Thank you, Julius. Ben Young?
Hi, I'm Ben Young. I've been living in the city of Everett for the last 12 years. I retired from Snohomish County government in the IT group. I live in Valley View at present. I am a member of the NAACP. I am on several boards and commissions, Snohomish County Technical Advisory Program, Everett Housing Authority. There are several other things present. I am the director of marketing and grants for the Communities of Color Coalition. I'm a longtime community-focused person, social activist. The main reason that I participated in this commission was because I wanted to ensure that it was an equitable process as well as it was something that would serve the people. I believe that thus far, this commission has done just that, and I too look forward to the comments that are made by the community.
Thank you, Ben. And then, Tony, if you want to hop back on your video, if you want to introduce yourself.
Sure. Tony Fairfax. I'm a demographic and mapping consultant. I have a company, Census Channel LLC. My specialty is redistricting. I've been drawing plans. This will be a fourth cycle, redistricting cycle, so almost 30 years I've been developing redistricting plans. I've enjoyed this time. I think you have a very engaging and intellectual commission, and I think so far has done you well. So I'm looking forward to the comments.
Awesome. Well, thank you, everyone. Now, I'll turn it over to Nicole to let us know who we will be hearing from tonight.
So we have one person RSVP'd to provide community comment, and that's Jennifer Coleman. So Jennifer, if you're on the line, as soon as you're ready, we're ready to hear from you. And if you're on the phone, you can unmute yourself by pushing star six. Okay, if Jennifer's not here, we do have a caller in from 6533. Is this somebody who's not provided comment before and wishes to speak tonight? 6533, you'll have to press star six to unmute.
Right, I just unmuted, and I passed at this time.
Thank you. So Jennifer doesn't, or who, I don't know if 6533 is Jennifer, but it doesn't seem that our RSVP showed up this evening. So I will email Jennifer and see if we can't get her in on Monday. I think, should we just leave the line open for maybe five minutes and see if anyone else decides to jump on and provide comment tonight, and then we'll call it a day after that? So I'll set a timer for five minutes and see if anyone joins us.
Thank you.
Esther, can you go ahead and start that clock, please?
Yeah, I got it.
While we're waiting, here's Rosie.
Hi, Rosie.
Hi, Rosie.
Hi, Rosie.
Hi.
Oh.
Hi.
Rosie for Rosie the Riveter. She's named after Eleanor Roosevelt.
Oh.
Hi, Rosie.
Rosie, while you have you on, do you have any comments to share? What do you think of our map?
What do you think?
Represent your baby interests?
State your address.
Oh my goodness.
Hasn't Rosie been with this process throughout?
Yeah.
Didn't she start at the table?
She's 16. I know, keyboards, huh? Looks fun. You want to stand? Stand up?
Ow.
She just wants to press keys.
Mm-hmm. You're eight months, eight months and a couple days. You're eight months, eight months and a couple days.
Yeah.
I remember you bringing your son to our public meetings back when districting wasn't on the ballot yet, when there were the public meetings to discuss it, and corralling him. Yeah, he's, uh, he's still wily.
Yeah, I know. I know.
There's the dog. That was her public comment.
Yeah. You do the ba-ba-ba-ba-ba.
Well, make sure to jot that one down.
It's her new trick.
Um, ma'am, we're gonna need you to calm down a little bit. I'm gonna kick her off Zoom, or Teams. Alrighty, well, we waited five more minutes and we didn't get anyone. I think we can, I think we can adjourn.
On the call earlier? Cause I saw-
Yeah, the person, uh, the, the two guests, one has already provided comment, and the other guest passed on providing comment. Uh, and I emailed, um, Jennifer, who RSVP'd today and, um, see if she'd like to RSVP or-
Like plus a number.
Yeah, neither person is providing comment today. So we have two meetings tomorrow. If anyone would like to attend, one at three o'clock and one at six o'clock. And then our last meeting is on the seventeenth, which will take place at five PM. Please remember that any written comment is always welcome and goes directly to the commission and is also posted online and will be part of the review when we debrief from these meetings. So with that, Simone, uh, you may, can close us out.
Yeah, I think we can adjourn. Um, go Hawks. Everyone have a good rest here Sunday, and I'll see you for a long time tomorrow.
Awesome. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you, Mary, for keeping us entertained.